7:01 this evening, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, but I want to welcome you all. Thank you for coming out on a cold winter night. I appreciate your involvement. Do we have roll call?
Councilor Long here. Councilor Combs.
Yes.
Councilor Hires.
Here.
Councilor Ratliff. Absent. We have one.
Thank you. Public notice of this meeting was provided January 13, 2020 at 12:01 p.m. 111 South Cherokee Avenue, Taalua, Oklahoma. Public comments. Comments are accepted from the general public concerning topics not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals be limited to three minutes speaking time. Fewest of totals of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to Taalua residents and in compliance with the Oklahoma Meeting Act, no action or discussions permitted by City Council on any issue or topic raised by speaker during this comment period. Does anyone wish to address the group? Seeing none, we will go forward with item number five. Discussion Possible Action for the City of Taalua's Continued Support Regarding Construction of the Veterans Memorial. This is brought forward because of a couple of things, but first being we had a request to allow the lighting to hook into the city's meter there on the sign. Mr. Doublehead tells me that the actual electric use for the light that would be on the flag would be less than $5 per month, so $60 per year, but we need to confirm whether that is acceptable. The other thing is we occasionally have a request to use the city engineer or access to other contacts that we have, and so just wanted to confirm that we are in support because of the intent is to bring additional people to town and to improve our economy. So, any questions, any discussion?
Can we just have them or authorize them to charge us no more than $60 a year?
Well, it would not actually be billed out separately.
$60 is a guess.
Yeah.
I mean, I would hit pigeonhole it and it actually ended up being like $62, $50. So, are you just kind of letting us know, or do you want a motion?
I really need us to go ahead and do a motion to continue support.
Then I would make, I'd be happy to make the motion to continue support of the Veterans Memorial for, you know, the public good of Taalua and the development tourism, all of the great things that could come from said memorial.
Um, second or third. Okay.
Any further discussion, if not, roll call?
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number six, presentation from the Taalua Area Chamber of Commerce. Monthly Report on January 1.
Thank you. And Tess, I'll give my report here in a minute. It should be on that flash drive.
Yeah.
January 1. Yes. But first of all, before you is a copy of our audit, and the front page is the summary page that our auditor did, who was unable to be with us tonight, and I'll just briefly go over that. So, the IRS issue that the chamber faced with the past embezzlement has now been settled for a lot less than we expected, and so this matter is basically behind us, other than some of that payback that we have to do with our line of credit, but we are glad to have that to bed and moving forward. We also had a net gain of $1,007.14 for the year. The Tourism Department has some significant cash reserves going forward. That is just basically still at the city. That's just funds that have never, we've not rolled over, we've just gained over the years. Our membership dues were up. Just recommendations from our auditor, who is Robert St. Pierre, CPA, is just making sure that our board of directors always understand that they have to have an eye on our financial records. And so, we do have policies in place in our processes that we go through each month to ensure that everything is as it should be and there are nuptials with our financials. So, we're very excited that we have a very good clean audit and moving forward in the work that we do. Before I get started on our monthly report, I do want to give a shout out to many city departments for their hard work that they put in toward the Christmas parade. They don't get enough shout out and hats on the back, but I will tell you that Chief King, thank you so much. We truly cannot do without them and his whole staff. Also, with emergency management, the fire department, and then also NSU's team that they put out there. So, just a big thank you to the city and all of our departments that make everything work well for us. Tess? Go ahead. Did I just hit those numbers?
I think you have to point it at the computer.
Does, do you have it turned on?
I'm not very good with turn on. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you. So, our membership this past month was 359 total members, that includes 305 businesses and 54 individuals. Next slide. Just to welcome to our new members on the next slide. Cherokee County Farm Bureau this past month, and this is all of our business renewals, 25 that came in this month. And Chamber News and Events, upcoming things. This past month, the Leadership Class completed their fifth session in January at the county. So, they had a fun day viewing all of the activities of the county, and our next session will be higher education in February. And then, let's see, that didn't save. Finley Ridge Residential Community officially opened for viewing, and we were able to do ribbon cutting this past month. So, if you've not been out there, please go out there. That beautiful residential community. So, since it's 2020, just to update that many partners, stakeholders in the community have come together in a task force that the chamber has kind of put together, and everyone is just working together to make sure we get the message out of why we need to count everyone within our community and the benefits that it has for funding, federal funding and state funding. And so, over the next couple, three months, you'll see messages. Cherokee Nation has a huge campaign going on to ensure that the tribal nation has counted as well as NSU being involved, the city, the county. I'm trying to think of the others, but there's probably about eight different partners sitting at the table making sure that we get the message out. And then, there's also recruitment activities going on. So, if you know any students or any, anyone that just wants to spend some time recruiting and, I'm sorry, not recruiting, but to go out and help us get the count, Tom Bernard.
$15 an hour. They've already hired a couple hundred. They need 250 more.
Thank you. So, we just want to ensure that we share that message and make sure everyone gets counted this year. Our AM Live, which is our monthly networking event, this last month, we visited the Blue Fern Bed and Breakfast. If you've not ever been there, you should do that, or any gentleman that wants to have a nice Valentine, wonderful weekend should call them. And then, our next one is on February 14, Valentine's Day, and we will be at the Thompson House. So, come join us, please. Lunch and Learn, we do have an event happening tomorrow at Century 21 in their event center or conference center, and our Tourism Director, Bill, and our Marketing Specialist, Ruben Kane, will also, they'll be teaching Business by Design. So, anyone that wants to learn a affordable graphic design can come join us and look at that, and at a later date, we will have an additional program that'll be more in-depth, a deeper dive into how to project design. So, come join us. That is tomorrow at noon. If you just want to come join us, please do so, even though it says make reservations, we're okay. We have extra lunch. And then, State of the Community, everyone please mark their calendar, will be March 26, 11:30 a.m. This will be a luncheon at the NSU Ballroom. Our legislative focus kicks off in February. We are moving our legislative breakfast to a legislative luncheon to accommodate more business people, people taking their children to school, and so that 7:30 timeframe was a bit hard for some, and we were requested to take a look at that. So, we will be moving this to the second Friday to accommodate some other groups that meet for lunch on the first Friday. And so, these are the dates, February 14, March 13, April 10, and May 8. Just stay tuned to our Facebook or Taalua Chamber or our website to find out more details on locations. And Tourism, this was December's. Gina had to put this together at the end of the year, so we've had a very good year this year. Tess, go ahead and, oh, there you are. So, these are, these are some numbers that you saw, I believe, last month, but our visitor guides that are distributed through Travel OK and through other different distribution locations continue to decline. And so, we're very excited to see those numbers happen and see people going to our Facebook to find out more information on Taalua. We had someone in from Mexico today, so it was just, it's just very nice to see that more and more people are coming for Native American culture, also our, right now, our lakes and rivers, because it's a bit chilly, but that soon will be picking up as the weather gets colder. So, you can just see some of the, some of the information that NPR requests come from. And those numbers are from November, so December's in January, so I can keep you updated. I think as Gina has mentioned, we have expanded our promotion and advertising in different guides and publications throughout the state of Oklahoma and outside of the state of Oklahoma. And Guide to Green Country is one of our big ones, also a national best tour publication, and of course, like Tin Killer, visitor guide. And over the next couple of months, we will be doing major distribution through the Tulsa Boat Show, Wichita Boat Show. I'm not sure, I think we're going to Kansas, we're not going to Kansas City, but Green Country does and R. Persson does, so we will be expanding that. We will be expanding that next year to include more shows to get our message out about Taalua. So, we also want to remind everyone that our state Special Olympic Summer Games are coming back to Taalua after being held in Muskogee, and that will take place March 28. So, they're expecting 600 to 900 event goers, 300 participants, and then definitely they will need 300 plus volunteers to help with that event. So, I'm sure there will be a call out for volunteers from the community in the near Gina had reported last month that the Tourism Department is creating itineraries for large biker groups. You know, we, we've kind of watched that over this past year and seen more and more traffic flow, bike flows come into our community, so the message has gotten out that we do have a beautiful area to ride, especially Highway 10. It's one of the, probably one of the biggest areas that has hit in Oklahoma from a search engine. So, that was interesting information that we found out recently. So, we will continue to develop those itineraries and continue inviting them to come to Taalua. And Gina just threw up some Facebook and website. One thing we are seeing is that we're seeing major increases in Facebook, social media, even Instagram versus websites. That doesn't mean our website will ever go away because that's where information is, and right now, the Tourism Department is trying to finalize a new look to that website, and so hopefully by next month, we will have a visual for you. That's all. Thank you. Any questions? I'm sorry.
Cindy, I was trying to get some information from the Chamber website the other day, and I looked at the transparency page. Hasn't been updated in the last time. And so, for us to compare and trust, we use audits.
We're working on that. Cindy, that would be all.
I have a question, just real quick. I was in a meeting today, and they were talking about the state tourism, and they were talking about putting, like, they weren't talking about closing parks, although they did talk about closing some of the state parks, some of the, some of the attractions that are in the state parks, like the golf course at one and a pool at another, but they talked about putting gates on the state parks, and so to go in, you'd have to pay a fee like $8 or $10 a carload, and that'd even to go down to like eat at the restaurant or to, you know, have a picnic at the picnic table. Is that something that we're watching and following? Is that anything that will?
Gina is very involved in OTIA, which is Oklahoma Travel Industry Association, and they, of course, are a voice on that. I think right now it's talk. I don't know that they actually took action on that one. And, but I will mention that to her and ask her to keep an eye on that.
Sure. It was fuzzy in the meeting that I was in, whether it actually had already passed or if it was just something that was coming to, you know, potential.
I think there's still talk.
But then, you know, they talked a lot about Tin Killer and Lake Forest Gibson, but you know, I can also see that then going to the river and doing that. I mean, that's a huge trade issue for Taalua and Cherokee County.
I have to check on that and see where we're at with that, and I do know that she has a meeting with them next week, I believe, so we'll get an update on that and I'll let you all know.
You have some senators that are really watching that too, opposed to a lot of that. It could be very detrimental, but hope long term.
I hope they are, at least everybody in the eastern departments.
Yes, definitely. So, I will get out. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much, Cindy. Item number seven, Discussion Possible Action Confirm Mayor's Appointment of Paula Muntzick and Randy Mercy to the Taalua Industrial Authority Board Replacing Trustee Joss Pechens and Trustee Anna Knight. Have a couple of terms that have expired. Our PIA Board has been working on revising their articles of incorporation, their.
Trustee nature.
Trustee nature, thank you very much. And just one of the things that they're recommending is to increase the number of trustees. Before that comes forward, we'd like to have a couple of fresh eyes on that proposal. Make sure that everyone's in agreement. Are there any questions or concerns?
No.
Do we have roll call? Oh, don't have a, don't have motion.
I don't have a question.
Sorry.
Was that motion?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. At this point, do you like to pull the, let me get it here. Thank you. Item number eight, it's not 18.
18, man.
Item number 20. Item number 20 is Discussion Presentation Related to City of Taalua's Financial Situation and Our Local City Administrator, Allen.
Mayor, this is something that should be part of the financial considerations at each and every monthly meeting, and this is something that the city treasurer should provide. So, at this time, I'd like to hear comments from our city treasurer regarding the financial condition of the city. I haven't had time looking what you've got.
Allen, we not, you know, this is just, you know, every body that I've ever served on, and I apologize for being late, I was having another one. There's a financial report that's usually included on the agenda, or there's a treasurer's report, or there's, you know, is there, is there, I mean, why have we, is that part of just municipal government that there's not financials that are, as a standard operating procedure included in our, included in our agenda?
Actually, in our codes and ordinances, there's a whole section regarding the responsibility of the treasurer to provide on a monthly basis the basic financial information for the council to review. We started last month providing you with the warrant register and the checks, and now we anticipate each month being able to provide you with this basic financial information. But there are seven things in the code.
And that's just, and that's just the ledger, like servant on the chamber or Main Street or anything else here at least, you know, but that wasn't even done until, until Mayor Cater and then you brought that, brought that too? I mean, or, that was before my time, of course. Is that something Dow or is that something you guys had before? Any of your financial stuff?
Nothing presented to us then. We had, we had, at one point, we had some financial information, but it was never followed up. It was just named after us with any explanation.
Well, I think we used to always get a financial statement, so we got QuickBooks or whatever, Casell version of what we're using, and when Marcy was here, we'd come, come in a separate email toward the middle of the month, and then it started being given to us at the beginning, because it was part of the consent agenda that we used to vote on every time, acceptance of the financial statements. I think we used to have a few months where we were questioning whether we were accepting or approving and whatnot.
But they were always behind us.
Yeah. And I think that stopped coming to us in June or May.
It just seems, it just seems to me that part of, I mean, clearly, the biggest part, one of the biggest parts of the role of us as a councillor is this fiduciary responsibility, and I feel like, you know, I've been, of course, we've been meeting and we've been, you know, staying up to that stuff, and I know, Lanning, I know you had some, you know, had some conflict before with the previous administration, and I was under the impression that once things have rolled, since things have rolled, that that was going to change. Has that, has that changed?
It's changed, but I haven't got a firm grasp on what we've got right now. You know, it was so convoluted before that I couldn't make a statement on it, and I still don't, I haven't seen everything I need to see to pronounce that everything is presented in a fair and balanced statement.
So, Lanning, how many days a week are you down here looking at the finances now? That we have a new administration and that, that previous obstacle's been removed?
Not much.
So, can you, can you put a number on that as an accounting person? Like, once a week, twice a week? Once a month?
Lately, I haven't spent much time at all.
Okay. And why is that? I mean, Sue, you came into office in May, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, since Sue has been here in May, how often have you been down here helping her deal with the financial crisis that we're in?
Hardly in.
Okay. Have you had any communication at all with the auditor regarding the audit report?
No.
Have you had any communication with the bank as far as changing our bank accounts after the previous administration left and the previous administrator and the previous CFO?
I have checked with the banks.
Okay. Which banks did you check with?
Bank First.
Okay. Have you checked with any of the other banks in which we keep money?
Uh, not lately, no.
I think that, I think the, I think the challenge really is, you know, to me, and you guys have probably seen me get fired up on this stuff before, but, you know, we got three accountants sitting up here, and I feel like, I feel like the two that are primarily that need to be, you know, doing the managerial portion of what this body is set to do are doing the accounting portion, and the one that's responsibility is to do the accounting portion is, you know, not here, not around.
Wow, yeah. I've got a part-time position. I can't be here all the time.
Exactly. And none of us can, and some of us probably kind of wish we weren't here as much as we are, so.
Well, I think we're all part-time at the worst, you. And I mean, I know when I went to my new, new officer administration training, whatever it's called, elected official training with, okay, right, I'm the one that does that. I think they said that, I mean, your position is the one that has the most culpability and the most responsibility as far as if, if we go awry, you're the one that's the most responsible for that legally. That's what I understood. Everybody else here took that training with me, is that correct, Grant?
Well, I didn't take the training, but I agree that our charter of ordinances directed at the city treasurer, there's a lot of this work that would be, would make up this financial situation described in today.
Could you repeat that, please?
I'm saying that I wasn't at that training per se, but I do definitely agree that our city code does put the onus on you to come up with a lot of this information that needs to be presented to council related to the financial situation of the city.
Should we, did you get it? Has there been a treasurer's report before?
Well, we would put financials together, but I was basically blunted from dealing with it.
So, when Marcy was here, did you assemble those financials with Marcy?
Did I assemble them? No.
Right. Okay. We just said we put financials together, so you said we, I thought you were acting like you and Marcy previously, or you and someone.
Well, we would look it over together.
You and Marcy would do that together?
Putting, putting everything together now.
Okay. So, when Marcy left, what was that, about two years ago, you were at it two years ago? You stopped doing that completely?
Well, they wouldn't let me get involved.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, I think collectively, and this is just my sentiments, I, you know, this isn't something I've necessarily had a conversation, but there's, there's two ways to look at this, you know, and I feel like either, you know, either you're part of the solution or not, you know, and as a whole, you know, I'd like for us all to be part of the solution. You got anything else, Allen?
No, I'm just pointing out that the financial statement that we prepared that's before you, if you look at the year-to-date actual, you can see that we still have some challenges. We've addressed those challenges, and out of the managerial department alone, if you'll just look at that one item, we've cut $389,583.56 in salaries in annual cost out of managerial, and that's something that we're going to continually diligently work on to reduce the expenses to get it back in line. It puts a strain on us when we don't have an active city treasurer, and we have other personnel, the financial support people, we don't have a finance director, so our financial support people have to step up and assume duties of a finance director. So, it does put a strain on us here when we don't have someone alongside us in the treasurer position. That's all.
I would like to point out that each of the departments here under expenditures, when you look at the percent remaining of their budget, almost all, all of one are over 50% remaining, which means that they are working diligently within those departments to cut their expenses as well.
And what are we at, what mark are we at today? The six months will be when? 30? Thirty? This is, this is the six-month report.
So one of the things that I like most, I recently went on the TPWA board when we did a shuffle, and Stephen went to the hospital, and I went to TPWA, and they always do a big announcement on the big TVs they have in their room to talk about, you know, where we're at on expenses and revenues, and I think they do it in a very simplistic way, and I think it's very eye-opening, because in the past, when we did get financial packets when Marcy was here, and we would get the 80 pages, that's very overwhelming, even to us as councillors who are familiar with the departments and the staff and how we work as a municipality, but to just the individual person who lives in the community who doesn't deal with that on a daily basis, there's no way they're going to look at that and understand it. But I do like, and Stephen, you'd probably agree with me, how simple Topol Public Works puts it out there so that anybody who doesn't know a single thing about TPWA can come in and see very clearly where they're at financially, and going, what they're doing to proactively address any issues or concerns. And so I very much like that, and I'm very happy that we have Alan and Sue on board as both CPAs who are working diligently to clean up the mess from the past. But I, I appreciate this information you've given us, and I know it's only going to get better, and I know we've got, I believe Michelle in the office who's been working really hard to help you guys get the city back on track, so I want to thank you guys for that.
Those are the, I'm looking at the emergency management, and they're like 71.2% of their budget, Lanning?
Yes.
Do they, don't they get some money from the county for that? Because a lot of their stuff is in the county more than it is in the city.
They are partially supported by the county, yes.
Okay. But this is just the city part?
This is just the city.
Okay.
Any further questions, comments on the finances?
Okay, so just to clarify, sorry, the general fund cash in bank, oh wait, never mind, sorry. The general fund cash in bank December 31st, 2019 is negative 548,300.
Correct.
Okay. Lanning, were you aware of that?
I knew it was a negative.
Okay, and do you have any plans on how the city can rebound from that, correct that?
Well, we've been taking our CDs and putting them into the general fund.
Okay, well, we, we all agree that that's a crappy plan, for lack of a better adjective. So, because that's not creating additional revenues, those are simple Band-Aid solutions, basically, our savings account, which is going to be depleted, how much do we have in savings right now? Through those Edward Jones investments?
I don't know at the moment.
Okay, so you have no idea if we were to cash off the remainder of our savings, how long that would get us by?
No, I don't.
Okay, but we do all agree that once the savings are gone, that's bad, without additional revenues or without additional expense reductions, correct?
Of course.
Okay, and do you have any plans for any of that financially to keep us from going insolvent?
I'll have to work with the administration, see what we can do. Lanning?
Yes, sir.
Councillor Lyon, since you were part of the city government that overspent and got the city into this problem?
Yes.
Do you have any ideas on how to?
Let me start by saying, I voted no on the last two budgets that were presented by the previous mayor, and I also voted no on cashing out the investments to roll them into the general fund to cover up over expenditures. Josh Bliss and I both voted no on those actions, and those were tiebreaker votes from our previous mayor. I don't have any suggestions right now, but I know that Sue and Alan have been working diligently day and night to save the city.
I know they have, yeah.
And I am not a CPA, nor am I maybe a CPA, nor am I one of these.
What's your major?
Well, I have a master's in business administration.
Okay, so you have some, some.
Yes, I, I do have some walking, talking knowledge, but that is not my passion. I am not being counted.
So you don't have, so you, you're kind of in the same situation that Lanning's in, that you realize there's a problem, but you don't have a solution.
Well, the solution is to increase revenues and cut expenses.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's simple, yeah.
There are, yes.
But.
I'm not paid to be right, right.
Cutting, cutting expenses and increasing revenue is not his job, that's kind of your job.
I think the issue is being active, Lander, that's what we're looking for here.
Tom Bernard. Lanny also, I've, I sat here and witnessed him object and point out many times in the past couple of years, the direction our finances were heading, and pointing out the problem that we were looking at, and he was belittled and locked out of participation. As far as fixing this problem, he hasn't, I know he hasn't been involved, he hasn't been allowed to be involved. Has anybody asked him or invited him with the new administration to participate more in this area or that area?
I don't think the charter requires you invite the city treasurer to do their job.
Under the circumstances that he's been locked out of doing his job for a couple of years, it just seemed appropriate?
I'm not sure he's been locked out, and I'm not, I'm not in no way attacking Lanny at all. When I got on the council, I could, I don't think I saw Aunt Lanny at, I don't know how many meetings.
Uh huh.
So, and, and the only time that I called out Lanny was when I said, we need to bid on, on our bank accounts with, with other banks, and I was told that that's his prerogative. Well, it's not his prerogative, the charter says that that official and any other official has to do what the council recommends. And I was argued with on that point every time.
You can also go back and watch all the city council meetings where he was belittled and treated terribly, that made him stop showing up as a, as a.
I don't recall him ever being.
We can debate that all night.
Are there further comments? If not, then we will move on to the next item, number eight, discussion possible action to approve the extra duty service agreement for services related to finance director duties being done by Michelle Collins, effective September 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, at $500 per month. Councillor Fums?
Well, in the current situation, said in the absence of our public finance director, a city administrator could cut those costs out, 360-something thousand, I think we can afford $500 extra for this individual that stepped up from shell, and I will put that into the motion.
Second, but then I will ask a question. Is there any way, September 1st, 2019, okay, never mind, sorry, never mind, I'm good, that's retroactive, I'm happy with that.
Have a motion second, any questions or comments?
I would just say, I mean, I'm all for employees getting pay and getting what's due to them. You know, the last meeting, I think we put this kind of on pause because we wanted to see the financial picture, and, you know, and Trey had mentioned, you know, that he had gotten some, you know, calls and, and whatnot from city employees and citizens, and, you know, at that point, I hadn't got some calls, but I have since then. I think, you know, some comments were made at the last meeting, that, well, if she's doing the job, then we should, you know, pay her, and I've gotten several calls from employees and citizens alike that are, you know, are talking about other employees that are kind of in the same boat, that are doing positions that they weren't necessarily hired on to do, that is outside of their job description, and they're doing it because this person retired and we didn't fill that position, or this person moved and we didn't fill that position, we just moved somebody over, and so I think as we move forward, we should be cognizant of that, and we should be cognizant of all of our employees who are helping and moving the city forward and doing things that are outside of their box that they may not be getting brought to council to, you know, get that extra money to, to do that second job, or that, that, oh, and this, what they weren't previously doing, and so that was kind of my initial gut. Again, I don't want to, I don't fault her, I think she's doing a great job, and I think, you know, if we're able to do anything for our employees, I stand next to them and by them, and I'm willing to help them succeed, so.
I'll piggyback off what my friend Stephen says here, you know, I mean, I think clearly, you know, it's a struggle when things get tight, you know, and I know you guys got to have, you know, got to have, got to have that extra help, you know, you got to have, got to have more eyes on the numbers, you know, and that's kind of, you know, kind of why I got fired up a minute ago, so I apologize for that, but I realize, you know, Michelle's a great resource for us to have, and I, and I think just for the record, there's no doubt that this, this entire workforce of the city of Topol would be loaded with, with folks that are really capable, and a lot of them are over capable, a lot of them are underpaid, and hopefully, once we steer the ship right, we're going to continue, you know, we're going to continue to see people enjoy their jobs and be compensated for doing their jobs, and so hopefully, this is the start of that.
Further questions or comments? Hearing done, Ruffel?
Councillor Hirsch?
Yes.
Councillor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councillor Wong?
Yes.
Councillor Combs?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine, discussion possible action to approve the changes regarding procedures and testing of the outdoor warning sirens. Mr. Mike Underwood.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councillor. You should have in your packets the outdoor warning system activation, activation procedures. We've had these a number of years, at least six, possibly seven years ago, we developed these, and over the course of the past three years or so, when I would go before the previous city administrator, asking if I should bring these forth to council to discuss, you know, guys have been out too, so I kind of sat on it, and we just kept using it best we could. But just, he didn't want to burden the council with our small department, I guess, but anyway, he's gone, now we have more capable people here and helping, and helping steer the city, and along with that, our department wants to get in line and do the same. First off, do I have any questions concerning the warning sirens before we discuss any of them? Or we can discuss the papers itself? Which is? Well, that's, that's the reason that I would like to get into a, at least a monthly test cycle, to where we would put people at each site that actually physically see the siren turn, if it doesn't, and I've told them via radio or telephone that I push the button and we guess we have a problem. So at that time, that was when we would call our siren company, the city uses CDL Incorporated out of Pittsburgh, Kansas, so.
Can you give us just a rundown on how, I mean, how it works, and as far as if there's a power outage, for example, are they still capable to operate? Is it?
They are if I step out to my vehicle, my city vehicle.
I mean, but I'm saying at the, at the location.
Oh, at the location, yes.
At the location, if it's out.
They are, they are sounded and run by a 24-volt system, so it's got two car batteries in it, two 12-volt batteries. If by chance the batteries have gone bad, or there's a problem, then, no, they won't sound. But ideally, the way it's supposed to work is whenever you press the button, it goes over the radio signal to the, each siren site, picks it up, there's a radio inside that box as well as the batteries, the rest of the siren components. It sounds for three minutes, and it's supposed to turn and oscillate for three minutes, and then stops. And we have a timer on the control box that we watch, and so as long as there's still imminent danger, I'll press it again, and we just go from there.
Is that, I mean, when you, I guess it's all or none, right? I mean, it fits you guys up to cover.
Right, right. Now, we can get set up, I've, I've done my own work, and we can get set up to do one at a time, but in order to do that, it'd cost anywhere from five to 10,000 to get it set up that way.
I wouldn't ask you, but just making sure, just put it on, and everybody, everybody's on board.
Right, we have 12 sirens that we sound, counting the two that are at Cherokee Nation.
So at our last weather event, our tornado in January, I was getting mixed kind of reviews. Did the sirens?
They did sound.
Blow, so all of them?
Well, as far, as far as I know, they did. I only had one gentleman that I've been in contact with, no one called the office and said anything. You know, usually, when I sound a siren, just there's an issue with the siren, I get a call from the person that lives in that neighborhood, or right across the street from it, or what have you, and I didn't get any calls this time.
And we had a lot of discussion, because I know over five years, we talked about this a lot, especially when we were replacing those sirens, or went to replace one.
Correct.
You know, because that has always kind of been my biggest fear, that we'll go to push the button and they won't.
Right, exactly.
But, you know, and we talked about a lot of it, how, you know, sirens are really an outdoor warning system.
Correct.
If you're in your house, I mean, you're not necessarily hearing.
Might not necessarily, you're correct.
So maybe there was some confusion there?
Well, there always, there always has been in years past with, and that was the one complaint that I did get, and it was at the mayor's coffee event, where she met with the public, and there were four gentlemen there that told me that the one at Wheeler Edition didn't sound, and so I'm asking them standard questions I'd ask anybody, and, well, I was inside my house, and I did have my TV up pretty loud, and, and so I might not have heard it, but he let me know that in Tulsa, they don't have that problem, but in Tulsa, they have them about, on a grid, they have them about every quarter mile, there's a siren, so they have, they have well over 100 sirens this city.
Also, that's comforting to know for me, because I, like I said, I was getting kind of some conflicting reports on one, one or two sirens didn't work, but some did, I missed the Topol tornado event.
I did, I did.
And the Tampa, Dallas snow event.
I did see a lot on social media as far as people saying that they didn't hear them, but then when you look up their, where they live on Facebook, some of them didn't even live here, and they lived in, in the other parts of the state, and they, as far as I can tell, they weren't students, but.
So what are you going to, what are you thinking, Mike, is that what I saw, was every Saturday, every?
No, no, not every Saturday.
One Saturday, not every Saturday.
What's your, what? What I would like to do is, is I'd like to do it every second Saturday in the month, and that's weather permitting, we would do a test of the system, a full test of the system. That means, like I said earlier, we would have individuals, I've had everyone from Topol Fire to Topol Police, and now, and then I've got quite a few volunteers that could make it once a month, to where they go to a site and wait for me to sound it, and then report back if it even worked or it didn't work, and we might know that.
Is that pretty standard in the communities, just the once a month?
Yes, some, some communities have done it once a day since the 40s, but.
Well, I figure, I used to work in Muskogee for years, and I want to say in Muskogee, like, every Friday or Tuesday, it was like a random, but it was like every week?
I believe they do it every Wednesday and noon.
It was all, it was at noon, and was, but it was like every week they did it for a portion of the time, you know, I guess when in, in the winter, although.
Well, I mean, we proved that on the 10th, that we can have severe weather 12 months out of here, so it can happen. out of here, so it can happen, and we want to stay on top of it, and, you know, when I say severe weather, it's, this, this was set up on FEMA guidelines, so all I did was take their idea and make it out, and when I checked to the, with all the other jurisdictions around us, none of the half sirens, theirs are set up pretty much same exact way, and one of the things that we would also use it for, I put it in here, was we would also sound them for straight line wind events, if we know that they're coming, and national weather's been pretty good about letting us know they're, they're on their way, but we felt like 80 miles an hour plus, straight line winds would be, that would warrant sounding I did have mixed emotions about that, because if you, if it's in the middle of the night, 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, most people are in their homes already, last thing I want to do is sound a siren and get them confused, and they start coming out to go somewhere else and take shelter, so that has always been in the back of our minds, is we would use that, and we have on a couple of occasions where it was in the middle of the day and we had a straight line wind event, but it's primarily for tornadoes, is what we try using.
And what are you asking the council to do?
Well, like I said, years ago, I tried to at least bring this to your attention and get the councils okay on the fact that we would like to do the standardized testing once a month, weather permitting. The only thing I didn't put in here that we probably could, if, if you would like, is I could put a, if it's a bad weather day on the second Saturday, it could fall to the third, but I don't, I'm afraid that might confuse the public, and I don't want to do that, so we'd probably just wait until the next month to do a full, all-out test of the system, but, you know, here we are in January, we need to strike the irons hot, and here we were, we, on the 10th, we had a, an actual event happen that we could see it unfolding, and that made us make the decision to go ahead and sound the sirens, because we felt like we had ample time to let the public know what was coming, and luckily, it didn't make that northwest turn as it was coming in, and come a little farther inside the city limits and do a lot of damage, so, but at, at the time that it was coming through Keys and Park Hill area, it really looked like it could aim primarily for the southern or southeastern portion of the city proper, and we just wanted to make sure everybody knew about it.
We're glad that didn't happen. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion second.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
When you say three miles, are you talking like, is there a point, or are you talking like the actual city limits, because three miles on the south end?
Well, we have felt, Mrs. Flanders is here, we, we, my deputy director's here tonight, we, over the years, we've developed the knowledge that most of them, most of our guys are out at least three miles out of town, sometimes set up watching them come in, or they're in a good vantage point where they can see that far out and know that it's coming, and we just felt like three miles was a good time span as far as giving the public enough time to act and, and get in their shelters.
Freddy holes.
Freddy holes, yes, sir, and now, a lot of them, the only shelter that we have in the city, that's a public shelter, the NSU University Center basement, but we have a few scattered out throughout the county, that's within the county, and so...
I think the UKV has a FEMA or a storm shelter.
They have two now, is what I was telling, I haven't gone out there to be, they told me if I came out there, they'd take me, show me around, but I think they were telling me they now have two structures that are considered and approved by FEMA, so that's good to know, and they open that up to the public, they, you don't have to be a tribal member to utilize that.
Do we have a motion second? Do we have roll call?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very welcome. Thank you, Michelle.
What day is it that you'd be trying to get?
Every Saturday.
Saturday?
Item number 10, discussion possible action to approve purchase of LED trail lighting from Voss Lighting, statewide contractor, at a cost not exceeding $75,000, for CBPG 2017 grant 17-037.
Mr. Sheldon McLeto on Grant Ryan?
Easy on the minister, sir.
You'll explain why we're...
Just to go to the state contractor for the bidding. Yeah, we, we can go direct to the vendor without a competitive contract, due to the time constraints in this grant, we've been given a mission by the Department of Commerce to have this closed out, not later than May 31st, and then the next item will address the other piece of this. Voss Lighting is the statewide vendor, and that is contract SW0817L, I think, if you, if you're bored and want to look it up, but provided a quote from them to the mayor and the city administrator, increased it just a little bit because they did not quote the shipping, it would be the poles, the lights, and the dusted-on sensors for those lights, so trying to conserve that 21-day time period for bidding, didn't have much luck on the next item for bidding, so felt the statewide contract was appropriate. Questions?
I will make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any comments? Roll call.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 11, discussion possible action to authorize mayor and interim city administrator to hire a qualified contractor for the installation of lighting along the history trail within the budgeted amount of CBPG 2017 contract 17-037. Selection may only be made after obtaining a minimum of three quotes for labor and materials not provided by the city.
Same, same project, we did go to bid on this because it was going to exceed $50,000, and it is for labor and professional services because it requires a licensed electrical contractor. We did not have any responsive bids, I think probably the timeframe was a huge issue for some. Visited with Mr. Chapman about this, what I'd like to do is to get three qualified bidders to bid the project, the scope would basically be the installation of a sonnet tube and the concrete pedestals, the conduit for the wiring and the anchor bolts, and stand the lights. Wiring and connecting those lights to the city's power source would require a licensed electrician and some coordination with city services and/or TPWA. I met with one potential vendor today, supposed to have me something by Monday, I would like, obviously, your input is valuable, it's your community, we always like to try to keep stuff local if we can, where I'm from, because we know that money turns over, but again, we're on a timeframe, and so pitched three different alternatives to the Department of Commerce after we did not receive any responsive bids, this is the clear way forward versus the city trying to do it in-house with everything else that's going on, so I recommend that you all authorize the mayor and city administrator to do that only after we receive three written quotes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I have a question. So, obviously, we get the, we've bid it out, nobody bidders, you get the quotes, we authorize, give authorization, you get the lowest of the three quotes, then will that come back to council, say maybe in February, in the consent agenda, just as a...
That's up to you folks, yeah, that's up to you folks, I, again, we're not going to have the lights before then, obviously, so time is not of the essence to get that contractor going, though it would be nice to, for them, as far as their work schedule, to get that out there, but I'll leave that in your capable hands.
Because I would like, I mean, I think that this is the way we have to move forward, we're on the crunch, so we need to get it done, but then I think just, you know, as a transparency, you know, bringing that back and saying, these are the three quotes, and this is how we move, this is who was selected, and this is how we move forward, would be viable to the residents.
I'll say that's how it's written, and I think it says discussion possible action to authorize the mayor, I mean, isn't that what's basically saying, is you guys would gather the quotes and make a decision without, without having us to help, trying to get in the way or whatever?
Correct, and then all I'm saying is make, and then to report back, or...
I would not have any problem with reporting back.
Okay.
And even let the council ratify, I think would be completely appropriate, if you so choose, to ratify that decision.
Just figure the consent agenda, the person's, you know, ratification if it happened, to use the words.
Any further comments, questions?
Do I need to amend my motion?
I mean, the mayor said.
No, unless you want a visitor to include this caveat, that's, it's up to you, I mean, it sounds like there's an agreement to do it or respect it in the motion.
Right, I'm, I trust them.
Whatever your, I mean, if legally you think we need to amend the motion, I'll happily do it if we're okay with how it's, was done.
Okay, we have roll call, please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheldon.
Item number 12, discussion possible action related to trash service rate study, and ordinance terms are 13-01-2020, amending chapter 5 of San Francisco Department of Garbage Disposal. Mr. Armstrong?
Yep, nothing's really changed, I just want to look over it and see if we want to move forward, uh, well, actually, there are a couple changes, sorry, Alan and I and Sue's been working on getting the cause for the stover cans, like, I'll sit, like, teaming up with Cherokee Nation and the two of them and stuff like that, so that's the only real change, just sort of, you know, by putting their steel on the dumpster, and so, that's the only real change, but does anybody want to go over or ask about, we can knock it out and move forward?
They would be chipping in a little bit of money also. They would be chipping in a little bit of money toward the purchase of...
Yeah, for the containers, yeah.
For that, so, right.
Yeah. Well, advertising, come on.
Chris, thank you for all your work in packaging this, and then thank you for seeking out those, all those partners, that's, they're great.
A lot of that, like, I just did the footwork, Alan and Sue put the, put the call out, and I just answered questions and, like, just tried to move it forward, so, you know, they have to give their kudos for that, too.
Teamwork, just like it's supposed to be, right?
It's good that we can collaborate with Cherokee Nation and the Katusas.
Be nice.
Yeah, whoever else wants to help, but...
Hey, one more, we'll see how that works, we're good.
We can add anybody that's a team with money.
Hey, it's good, dollars on it, and do a dollar money on that, too.
I would know, just so it's clear to the council, that this ordinance does not affect the rate change, so you have to, you know, if you approve the ordinance, you also might consider the rate increase if you choose to, it's an agenda item, if you want to do both, or whatever.
So you're saying by, by accepting or by approving the ordinance, it does not...
The ordinance doesn't affect the rates, so the rate schedule that he's suggesting is something you could approve, right, as well, if you wanted to.
So it would just be, it'd be added on to the motion?
Yeah, I'm just making that clear, that it's not in ordinance itself.
Do we have the rate scheduled?
On page five of your package, I think. I'm sorry.
It's on six.
You asking what, how much we're trying to deal with? Like, the last time we had a raise, or any anchors or anything, is like 2012, so, yeah, March 13th, 2012, so...
And this is actionable tonight, because we discussed it a lot, is that being correct?
Yeah, both items are actionable, if you choose to move forward, if you want to put an effective date on the rate schedule, if that's something you do, because it's a great...
Do we have a recommendation on when the effective date of that would need to be based on a billing cycle, do we know that information? Because we don't want them to have to prorate, because that could be a nightmare, right?
Right.
Do we want to wait and adopt the fee schedule, do we know the effective date of that, just to be cleaner?
Well, like, like in the execution plan that we've been coming up with, like, it just really depends on if we approve it's not or not, because we're looking to try to find it in March.
Okay, so, is everybody in this, is everybody in this city on the same exact billing schedule, the same start and end date to their services, do we know that?
With, with the...
I just write my check and mail it, I don't even know.
Like, with them having, your TPWA handles.
It's TPWA, so some are on the first, and there's two billing cycles.
Oh, is there?
And I don't know how that affects our actual service, you know, we might bill, you know, TPWA might hold the money, it might be like a one-month thing, and they might hold the middle of the month money until, does that make sense?
And they sit it all down in one month's time, but as far as for them, because they're the one that bill and collect that for us, so we're going to have to give them a date in which to do that increase.
Right.
And notify the people who are going to get billed the higher amount, so maybe we should just adopt the ordinance tonight and then come back at the beginning of the month and adopt the fee schedule with the correct effective date?
I would recommend that if we adopt it tonight, we can have it implemented March 1, that's what our implementation...
Okay, so we want the implementation date, okay.
March 1, that's the ample time to go to TPWA.
Well, because they're, because aren't they all like a month behind when they're doing it?
Yeah, they bill them, but that's electricity, I don't know, they might not bill this, might have to get a month behind.
Well, because like, I, I live on North Side Court, and I have gas at NOPFA, and then all my other utilities with TPWA, and then electric with Lake Region, so like, my TPWA bill's always been on the first, and that's the one that's on, is the water and the sewer, so...
And they just, it's, it's convenient for them, half the people on the first, half the people on the second, but I'm, I mean, I, I think that this is great, it's a solid and solid waste plan for Tlaloc, to move this gear, and then to, you know, really bringing us into where the rest of, you know, the world in Oklahoma is in our solid waste, and so I think that's great. My only question is, we passed this tonight, we don't have cards, and we don't really know how we're gonna, if we're paying for the cards, you know, if our partners are going to help us pay for the cards, how many cards we're buying, and so, do we sunset this, you know, pass it, but it doesn't start, because when we pass this, we now have an ordinance that says, you have to use this card, you got to put it out by 7:00, you know, 7:00 AM on this day, and have your card picked up by 7:00 AM on that day, there's no real green area for anything else, I mean, we're now saying this is how we have to do it, and we haven't supplied anybody the card to do it.
Well, and like, that goes back to like...
Another way, it's like...
Well, that also goes back to like, if we decide to do this, like, I can put together like an action plan to, to get the ball moving forward, but if we don't do it, then we're just sitting there at idle, so...
Right, and so...
I think that's a great question, what's the best way to attack that card before the horse, I mean...
The mayor actually made about a point, that you could obviously bootstrap an effective date as cards are provided to users, that would just be my, I mean, or we can bring it back in February if you want to kick it again, but that language is not in this ordinance, you can clearly say, adopt it with this one change, that it's not effective until the users can receive the card from the city, or the dumpster, I guess, the dumpster piece would already be in place, though.
Ultimately, we, we go on enforcing it, I mean, you know, we're not going to enforce it until we're recognized that everybody has their cards.
Correct.
I mean, or...
We would.
Right, I mean, that's, that's one way to, I mean, you can do it either way, clearly, it'll be, it'll be in place 30 days from today, from today, though, it'll be published in the papers.
When they, when we did the, now, I wasn't on the council, so... When they, when we did the, no, I wasn't on the council, so, I don't know, but when they did the last dumpster thing, the enclosures, you know, that was a sunset, so that was, they passed it, and then it was not, didn't take effect till like six months down the road. And then I think they got to that six months, and they kicked it like another year down the road. But is that something that we could do tonight, pass this, and then it doesn't go into, we can say it doesn't go into effect for 90 days? And then if it, we get to 90 days and we don't have what we need, we can give it another 90 days?
Chris is working on an execution implementation plan, and that may be the point, within 30 days, we bring that plan back. So if you do want to sunset this, I wouldn't do it for an extended period of time. We plan on executing and implementing, so.
Yeah, like, I'm not trying to like put a salt lagoon or anything like that, but like, if, like, if you put a day on it, it's kind of hard for me to tell you that I get it done at 30, because I'm missing three people, and I'm driving and doing stuff like that. I don't want to give you guys incomplete information, so like, I'm just being honest.
You do it all the heavy.
Let me all learn.
I went out of your state. Um, so, I mean, do you hate 90 days?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
I mean, as a mayor, since we also, I mean, we haven't ordered the cards, do we?
We can't order, we can't order the cards until, you know, you know, if we're going to get some assistance, maybe if we're getting some assistance, we're going to order the cards, and then, then we need assistance, but I mean.
That's my issue, potentially, because you pass this in 30 days, and this is how it has to be.
Yeah, but we enforce that, or don't enforce it.
Yes, sir, would you like to come forward?
Y'all were talking about expenditures again, if you don't have money, and is it a budgeted item?
The solid waste does have the funds to be able to do this, but it is not in the budget at this particular moment. You are correct. So we would have to do a budget amendment for this as well.
Do a reallocation.
Reallocation.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's not on the agenda either, is it?
Correct, so it would have to be a next.
Yeah.
I appreciate you keeping this straight.
Where's that proceeding, will you do the allocation first? Not necessarily.
We can move on to the allocation and pass this ordinance.
You can still move forward, there ain't any agenda. In fact, that only tells me that maybe this rate hike should happen sooner rather than later, if you're.
Well, because that's the thing, is when we, you know, even if we could start to collect, I mean, people know that the cans are coming, that's going to be in the press, that's going to be on Facebook, that's going to be, you know, everybody's going to expect, you know, we're not going to give them a finite necessarily, I don't think we need to give them, you're going to have your can by April 1st, because if we do that, then your phone is going to be blowing up my phone, so I feel like, you know, I, I think of, you know, I don't see any point, I don't see any point in putting a sunset, what do you call it, deadline?
Sunset, I mean, you know, I feel like it's a. I mean, it can be 30 days, while we're getting it 30 days.
That's what it is on.
And then it could be an additional, I mean, I, you think you can done 30 days?
I don't know, this kind of says, I don't think you can give it.
Yeah, I do, I do, I get that.
And I'll see, I'll see if, if we, if we don't, you know, if we don't get it done in 30 days, I mean, what are the repercussions? I mean, if we put a date on it, and it's not, I mean, we're not shooting, I mean, it's not, we, we, it's our, you know, it's what we're clearly having an effort to try to accomplish, this is what we're trying to accomplish, and we're setting our own deadlines, basically, right? So, um, well, I, I think, I think I'd just like to approve, let me get, let me follow the motion here, and include, so I want to make a motion to, we're, we're on 12 here, this new agenda, right, okay, um, I'd like to approve the ordinance number 13-01-2020, amending chapter five of sanitation and department and garbage disposal, including the rate schedule with. Does that, is that?
I would say, and also, also approve, approve the rate schedule as presented.
Yeah, I'll get it presented, yeah.
You don't want that as part of the ordinance, is what I'm hearing, is that right?
Yeah. One second.
Have a motion second, or the discussion?
No effective date, as proven, you implement.
That's a fair point, you want the rate schedule to be effective March 1st, 2020.
I'm sorry, that's what I left out. Okay, let me amend my motion, so, um, I'm going to make a motion to approve the, trash rate study in ordinance 13-01-2020, amending chapter five of sanitation department garbage disposal with the rate schedule as presented, starting March 1st.
Effective then?
Effective March 1st.
Are you willing to amend yourself?
I am.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Collins?
Yes.
Councilor Myers?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 13, discussion possible action in regard to accepting budgeting necessary funds for the 2019 bulletproof vest grant in the amount of $3,385,10, of which $1,692.55 will be matched.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, this is our annual bulletproof, bulletproof vest grant. It's based on the amount of expiring vests that we'll have during the, during the budgeted time, or during the grant period. Um, we'll have to fund all of this upfront, um, and half of the amount will be reimbursed to us um, after we purchase vests, they send us a check for half the amount, it's $325, basically a vest they send us. So these are vests we have to buy anyway, this is a way to get half of them paid for, half of each vest paid.
Ready for a happy motion?
Sure.
I happily make the motion to approve this recommendation.
One second.
Discussion?
What's the lifespan of a?
About five years is what the recommended lifespan, I mean, mine's, mine's older than that, but I don't wear mine every day, so, but yeah. Well, I mean, it doesn't really go with my ensemble, it's, it's in my vehicle, about five years is the lifespan.
Hey, Chief, I'm just curious, what do you guys do with the taller ones when you're done?
We keep them, and guys carry them in trunks for extras, just in case, I mean, whatever, reserves wear them some, I mean, some protection's better than none.
Sure.
But there's not really a way to determine whether, other than shooting it, and once you shoot it, it's, throw it, throw it away anyway, so there's really no way to test it other than recommended usage is five years, unless there's noticeable damage or wear to it.
Yeah.
If there's no further discussion, roll call.
Councilor Collins?
Yes.
Councilor Myers?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good, thank you. And item number 14, discussion possible action in regard to accepting budgeting necessary funds for the 2019 JAG-LLD grant in the amount of $10,000 for the purchase of computers within the police department, Chief Dean.
Once again, a grant that we receive almost every year, um, it's usually a very big grant, this year, computers was available, and it was something that wasn't budgeted in our regular budget, so we'll be able to buy new laptops, replace some laptops in patrol cars with this money.
Make a motion to approve as recommended?
Second.
Is this outside of the ready?
Yes.
Have a motion second, any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilor Myers?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Collins?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number 15, discussion possible action regarding renting the Zamboni to five-star productions. I received an email from this company, um, who has asked to rent our Zamboni for the making of a advertisement. They've been filming in western Arkansas, so they would pick up the Zamboni, keep it for a week, and then bring it back to us. It would be housed in a garage while in their service, and they would propose to pay us $500 for the rental of our Zamboni. They do have insurance.
Do you have any idea what the value of that thing is?
Just for future.
I don't know, there's a blue book.
I'll bet Drew knows.
You'd pay $25,000 for it? Sounds worth it forward. Sounds worth it outside. There's an auction website that we could, we could look at and see comparable equipment like that.
That's nice to know, thank you.
Yes, we can share that with you later.
Okay. In your package, you do have a copy of the email request and the agreement for the response, where they're offering you $500 and providing a certificate of insurance.
Drew, you feel good about that?
I'd put motions, at least specific minimums of insurance you want the mayor, the city, and the chair to approve before it's released or something like that.
I agree.
But you probably know better than us for that.
That's why, that's why I was asking for the va, you know, for the value, you know, it seems like if they're in a supply, it was a certificate of insurance, you know, they just, they could, they could pick a number, or?
Here the insurance guy, give us the number, and we'll put it in the motion.
I mean, Drew said we pay $25,000, I said, you know, we're giving $25,000, so, um, I guess.
Um, it says to make a donation of $500 to either the city or the organization. I assume that has to come with the city.
Yeah, we clarified it's not a donation either, it'd be a exchange for, yeah.
If it truly is a rental.
So the motion needs to say that we are approving a rental, hypothetically, if I would make a motion, approving a rental in the amount of $500 to include a certificate and the insurance in the amount of $25,000?
Yeah, I'd also put the timeframe if you want, or we, we can.
From February 1st to February 8th?
It's actually, there's the first through the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize, the first through the eighth.
Your bench, your bench man.
One of her, sir.
Need to budget our revenue?
There's, there's state law out there that prohibits the city from providing services that are available from commercial, commercially available, such as things as paving, church parking lots, uh, things of that nature. Have you done any research as to whether or not that, this would fall under that statute? Since I'm sure Zambonis are commercially available.
Yeah, I have not researched that topic specifically, no. I would imagine, just talking off, you know, allowed that, uh, if the city could monetize the resources in the city there, you know, would make in use today, if that law liked the new surplus property, that would make sense for the city. But I'm with you, that law says that I, that's incorrect of that. So, that means a caveat of the city attorney's approval after researching this topic that you brought to our attention today.
Now, we'll have to modify the motion if you do, because now it does appear to violate state law, so.
I'm selling. I don't know.
So, and the.
Do what?
She never made a motion, even she was having a technical.
Yeah, I still want to measure, okay, can you, can you try again? Okay, I will officially make a motion to lease the Zamboni from February 1st to February 8th in the amount of $500 payable to the city of Tallawatch to include a $25,000 certificate of insurance coverage with the caveat that we are not in violation of state law. Ending this city attorney's ruling.
It landed. Drew voted her, the Zamboni was for sale for $500.
Yes, true.
He's here, yeah.
Mr. Hockey Bear.
I just got to ask if, uh, is there going to rent it to shoot something, you don't want them, is there anything in there about them being able to market or paint it, or, you know what I mean?
Maybe shoot something.
Was there going to shoot a commercial or something?
Commercial production.
That, that issue has not been discussed, but he can modify the motion if he wanted to, absolutely clear, say it's going to be in the same condition as perceived.
I will.
Return to the same perceived condition.
Happily modify. Uh, hey, but increase the resale value.
The same or better.
The same or better condition, I will modify my motion to include, return it the same way you picked it up, or prettier, cleaner, neater.
And are you willing to amend your sentence? Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Collins?
Yes.
Councilor Myers?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Discussion possible action to lift the moratorium to allow advertising and recruiting for a patrolman in the police department. Um, Miss Tate is ill this evening, so thank you for standing in.
Oh, not a problem at all, um, this position's been open even before the mo, the moratorium was put into place. However, um, I'm here tonight because we're about to drop a low adequate staffing level on shift. We have an officer who is in the National Guard, basically, and is being deployed. His deployment's also been bumped up about three weeks, so he leaves the end of this month instead of the middle of next month, um, which puts me in a crunch, um, however, that's why I'm here today asking for that. It would drop a shift down to having six officers on the shift, and we just can't cover the streets at minimum staffing levels with six officers on shift, so that's why I'm here today. It's a position, in a sense, that in another 60 days, I'll have another vacant position that we're not paying for. To date, by my calculation, between the patrolman and the one and a half dispatchers we've left open, I've saved about $83,000 in salaries this fiscal year because of those vacancies, so.
And we appreciate your efforts, and that.
So that's why I'm here, asking to lift the moratorium to fill this with a full-time officer.
So his, he's going, he's going to be deployed, so his job is not going to go away?
His job will not go away, but we also won't be paying out anything once his personal leave time, um, is expired, is exhausted.
And what's the pre- time, just to lift it as to advertising and recruiting, not to actually hire yet?
Correct.
He'll come back for you, right?
Yeah, I'll be back the first of the month.
And that's not, so that's not the moratorium as a whole, that's just for this.
For this one item, right?
And my plan is, we have an officer in a part-time position right now that worked as a reserve. He's been in the part-time position for a year and a half, he's trained, um, and that's why I plan on sliding into the full-time position. It's, I mean, we've had a working interview with him for three years, so.
He's diligent, he's diligent, we'll give him points for that.
And he'll give him a vest.
He has, he has a vest that's within code right now, that is.
Yes, the one from the trunk. Okay. I will make a motion to approve as recommended.
Second.
Have a motion second, further discussion? Now, the roll call.
Councilor Collins?
Yes.
Councilor Myers?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to number 18, discussion and possible action to rescind the step and grade pay matrix for regular full-time employees.
Same, you skipped a line.
Did I? Okay, oh, okay. Seventeen, sorry. Discussion possible action to lift moratorium to allow advertising and recruiting for a dispatcher in the police department.
Once again, same justification or same plea, um, we lost a dispatcher, we've been at five, we only have five dispatchers right now. We're on the books to have seven full-time and one part-time. Um, we had one full-time and the part-time vacant this entire fiscal year, but we just can't put a person in a chair of dispatching with five dispatchers. We can, but people are working their day off, nobody can be sick, nobody can take a day off. So that six dispatchers really are minimum standard to be able to schedule and, and work seven days a week, 24 hours a day.
Um, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Is there any technological things coming down the pipe that, I mean, it seems to me that, you know, I mean, I can ask Siri to turn on the, you know, I mean, is that, is that, is there a way that you see five, 10, 15 years from now that that becomes a, you know, a call center becomes? is there a way that you see five, 10, 15 years from now that that becomes a, you know, a call center, becomes, you know, a couple of people with the technological capabilities to do this dispatch job?
Well, that's it, we only have one dispatcher there at a time, right now, with being at that, being at that five or six dispatchers and so. And it's a lot different job than it was when I had it in 1999. I don't know that I could do it right now by myself. There's a lot to it. We have computer-aided dispatching, but really it just form fills some of the stuff once you create the call. But we'll take, I look for us in the next 15 years to have drones on every police car that activate and follow the officer in the air when he, when his lights come on and when he pushes a button, so. There's no telling what dispatch will be.
Just curious. Okay, sorry.
If there's no further discussion, roll call.
Councilor Byers?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Wong?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, mayor, thank you council.
Okay. Discussion and possible action to rescind the grade pay matrix for regular full-time employees, grades T-111 through T-123. Again, Ms. Tate is not here. Mr. Chapman?
This was tabled from our last meeting and it simply clarifies, simplifies, and more closely adheres to what we're currently doing by rescinding this and accepting its replacement.
We didn't have a replacement of a life the last meeting.
We didn't.
That was what we requested, we just had the extension and it said, we're going to pull something, we need to know what we're, so we needed out.
Seems to me the range is the same, but.
This, it has no effect on our finances. This is not a dollar move, wouldn't we know?
But it does have long-term effect on the finances. Because it, the new pay range moves up several positions.
Actually, there's the old pay range did a, three positions that are currently need to be moved up to comply that it's 23 cents is what you're looking at. And we're not going to address it until the next budget year.
But just like I told you on the phone, you know, just earlier. You know, one of the reasons that, well, the only reason really that we've been told that this needs to happen is because the city can't financially continue at the pace that somebody's salary, with the salary, when we bumped the salary. But then, that doesn't seem to really be happening with what we then were presented. Because it bumps up three positions to higher grades and it.
No, you've already bumped them up. In August, you changed the police, in February, you changed the Parks and Recreation Director. What we've simply done is put them in the right position.
Yeah, those two, yes, I understand that they were.
There's four employees outside the pay grade.
Operator, there was a T-112, it's now a T-113 in the new plan. There's a solid waste mechanic, that was a T-113, it's now a T-114 in the new plan. There's a solid waste collector, I believe, that was a T-111, it's now a T-112 in the new plan. So those are at least three positions that have gone up an entire grade. And I understand that that doesn't come with a financial raise for them if we were to adopt a new plan. But what it does come with is, they've now, some of these people have worked for the city for three or four years and they're where they're at. And the next one that we hire in will come in at a higher grade. So where they would have come in at, you know, 26,353, now the next one will come in at 27,671. Then you just, T-112 would have come in at 27,671, it'll now come in at 28,898, which that's a mess-up, I believe. I think if we're keeping with the other plans, it should be 28,989. And then the T-113 will come in at the T-114 range, so. And, you know, we've also been talking about, and Armstrong said tonight, that he's down people in the solid waste plant. So the very next people that we're about to lift the moratorium and start hiring are our solid waste collector, our solid waste mechanic and driver and whatnot. Which will then bump them up to the larger range. And I say all that to say, I'm halfway okay with that. I mean, if that's where we think that we need to be and we need to adjust those, those pay titles to put them in the higher grade, then we can do that. But I think that's the motion that should have been brought, is adjusting those pay titles to put them in the higher grade. Not let's scrap everything and do something else.
May I say something? One of my suggestions in my meeting with HR on this, because I have a position that's going from a T-111 to a T-112. It was not only a position in the entire department that was a T-111, it's our records clerk slash dispatcher is how they are in the books, basically. My suggestion was to combine T-111 and T-112. So you didn't get into the, you didn't get into, basically you just dropped the T-112 starting salary by a little bit. You leave your current employees where they're at, but anybody else hired in new at T-112 starts at that 26,960 or whatever it is, 696 or whatever it is. And yes, in eight years, five years, we're going to be paying out a little more because that pay grade's about, I don't know, 12, 14 hundred dollars more than the T-111, correct? Without looking at it, I don't have it in front of me. That was my suggestion to combine, because once again, like in, in my department, that position in T-111 realistically does more work and more important work than what our dispatchers are, and yet that position was below all the dispatchers. Trash collectors, no offense, but, I mean, that's a crappy job. And then to be at a T-111 or T-112, also on top of that, T-111's paid employees and they're, they're out there like we are, in the heat, in the snow, in the rain, whatever it is, they're, they gotta pick up trash, no matter what. They don't get days off like that, so. Just as food for thought on that is to combine that T-111, T-112, so really you're not adjusting the bottom end, but in the end, they're going to work towards two more grades, basically, two more steps in that grade. Anyway, I'll head.
Thank you, ma'am. My only other question with doing away with the steps, is you know, steps are intended to be able to hire somebody in, you know, a job description is, ranks out at a T-111. And then a step is intended to say, well, you've got somebody with four, four years of experience. Then they don't come in at a step one, they may come in at a step three. Or you've got somebody that comes in with a bachelor's degree and eight years' experience, they don't come in at a step three, they come in at a step five. And so it's just a way to kind of keep everything on even. That way, it's not, as each job comes up, we're going to give this one this amount of money, we're going to give this one this amount of money. You've got the step and grade. Now that doesn't transfer over into when they start getting raises. I mean, it's just like, we didn't have a minute, you know, that works. Those steps don't transfer over into the raises, the raises are adjusted by the head of the body. And so I think there's some confusion on, I don't know who is, where the confusion lies, but there's some confusion to think that when I get a positive evaluation, I get an extra step. Rather than the 3% that the council has allotted or a 2%, 4%, wherever we're at. And I think that's an easily fixable thing by saying, no, that's not the way it works. You can go back to the handbook that says that's not the way it works, because the handbook doesn't mention anything about the step and grade once they're actually onboarded into the city. So my whole, my, my fear is that by doing away with the step system, we're doing away with, you know, the system that kind of keeps everybody on the same playing field and kind of keeps all of our salaries in line and make sure that we're actually assigning proper experience and educational attainment with how we onboard them onto the city.
So my understanding is that when you do have somebody come in with additional experience and is not going to be hired in at a step one, that when the HR director brings that to this body to approve that, she then justifies why the additional steps. And so I would anticipate that the same process would be required even if we didn't have a formal step grid. Because while the starting salary for a T-114 is $30,308, I suspect that this body would question seriously anything beyond that. And need the justification for any increase past that point.
Absolutely, I would just wonder, you know, right now she can say, we're, we're bringing them on at this grade, because that's their job description, and this step, because they have five years' experience and a bachelor's degree. And so that's, so we're bringing them instead of a T-1 step, or a T-14 step four, we're bringing them on, or one, we're bringing them on in a step four. Which you go to the sheet and that's 34, 35. Whereas, if you don't have this step system, how do, how does the HR director know where to value that? How does she know, how, what is the policy that then says, well, they've got a bachelor's degree and four years of experience, so I'm picking, you know, 34, 35 rather than 35 even or 36, because I'm feeling generous today.
And I'm not real knowledgeable here, but so she has something, some guideline that says each of these items is worth a step and that's why she picks step four as opposed to step six for?
Correct, that's what she should have.
Does she, I don't know, I haven't ever seen or heard that.
I mean, I would assume, I guess that goes back to the policy, and if she doesn't have that, then I think that's the policy we need to fix. Not do away with the step and, with the step system. Because I'm, I'm not denying that there, if, if we need to change where some of the jobs rate, you know, we need to change where some of the jobs rate. If we need to put some policy in place that says, you know, this is how you go, this is how you pick the original step, then we can put some policy in place to pick that original step.
I'm just saying that you're doing the same thing with a sheet that looks like this as opposed to a sheet that looks like this. So the complexity level and the level of understanding of those employees as to why their starting salary is what it is, I believe is cleaner and easier for them to understand when it is a simple sheet as opposed to something like this.
And I guess what I'm saying is, we're not though. You're, by only supplying this, what you're doing is instead of having a sheet like this, you now have a sheet like this, of beginning and an ending. There's nothing here in the center that guides how you onboard someone. And so then that becomes up to the HR, I mean, it still doesn't solve the problem on how you, you know, you assign education points or how you assign experience.
It doesn't solve the problems they even have at this broad, because your HR director, she's the one picking the step.
It should, because she should have guidelines that tell her, you know, which step to follow. Education, a bachelor's degree should be worth, you know, one step, an associate's degree should be worth, you know, one step, a master's degree should be worth two step. You know, there should be something in there, and if there's not, then first of all, I don't know how we've been doing it because she's been assigning steps to jobs that come in.
Well, and that's why I was looking to you counselors who were here when this was adopted, because you would have adopted this at that time. And I don't know if either of you remember or you, you remember that discussion about how you had moved from one step to the other?
Basically, it was council approval to, for, and it was an overall, that, it was, even though it was a 3% raise, you were really just moving up a step or a grade, whatever it was. I've never started anybody higher than a grade three in a step when I hired them in. And that was based on years of experience. If you could justify based on years of experience, education, things like that, then step three was as high as you started someone. For grade three in a step was as high as, that was just kind of the practice has been for years and years, or had been for years and years at grade three. And you made your justification to HR basically saying, you know, I have a dispatcher that worked for us when I was a rookie officer, came back, she's got 20 years, and I said, I want to hire her at grade three. So, but grade three was as high as I've ever seen go, starting off someone.
So is it, as a, to your officers, to your employees, the guys, the council, guys that work underneath you, I mean, is this, you know, is this matrix, is this, is there, to me, it seems like there's a misunderstanding as to what the matrix is, to what the matrix is, you know, when you as a, you know, if your guys get a raise, which of course you and I have.
Right, but I still have 10 employees that aren't.
But they come here and they say, oh, well, next year I'll be making, you know, is that the confusion, is they feel like they?
I think that is a confusion, when you look at that page, you assume that year two I'm going to make this, year three I'm going to make that, year four I'm going to make this, and really that's not the case, because it takes that.
Misunderstanding of that.
Correct.
It's just point of entry.
Correct.
I mean, I'm sure it is a percentage, right? I'm sure it is a percentage. I mean, I worked at the chair of the nation and I've never seen this.
That would be something just for HR, department heads to look at.
They started at this and then every year you get whatever the council at the chair of the nation approved that you go toward. And then, you know, I've seen these type of this, that has, you know, the beginning range and the end range of, you know, the position. But this is an internal, the steps are an internal HR.
It's a cheat sheet. It's a cheat sheet just to show what 3, 6, 9 stands.
So what does that mean, so what does that mean that, you know, if, you know, today if we did away with this matrix and, you know, and just for clarity, just so I can wrap my mind around it, is there no more step, basically, that's, I mean, so the step just goes away and it's just you get your grade based upon your job description? And the steps, you're just, that's, I mean, is that something that she has in her privy where she can look, you know, in her files and say, okay, well, you know, she doesn't say step three, but she just says $17.
Right, because if we rescinded, then there is no grade anymore, it's just steps and that's it.
Or opposite.
Or grades and no steps, yeah.
I'll say Council Wong, I mean, you work in HR.
Yeah, I mean, this is my day job, and I, I do have a chart that looks very, very similar to page 65 in here. And when I bring someone in, we write them based on years of experience for the job that we are hiring them to do. So for each three years of experience, they get a step. We don't give anybody any additional steps for associates, for bachelors, for masters. Obviously, those requirements are written into the job description based on, I mean, most of my positions are clinical. So, you know, you have to have an associate's to be in R N, so they're very specific goals. But yeah, that's what we do, is we bring everybody in, we are completely funded through Medicare and Medicaid, and as you know, Oklahoma, we're not so stable on Medicaid sometimes, and we don't guarantee our staff any annual raises, it's always based on funding availability. I mean, obviously, if we don't have money to pay, we're not going to give anybody, you know, if we can't afford it, we're not going to do it. So that's up to our governing board to determine in conjunction with our CFO annually whether or not we're going to be able to do those raises. So even though we do fall in line with the tribe, we have to fall in line with financially what our agency can sustain. So, but yeah, we do have a similar chart for each specific job description, and it does impact people coming in. The raises are adjusted each year based on their performance evaluation. And if they have a poor performance evaluation or if they have significant disciplinary actions throughout the year, they don't get anything, or they get a 1%, I think is the lowest, I think 4%, 1.5, 2%, depending on what's happened throughout the year, but yeah.
Hopefully, if I have the experience of Harvard.
Well, what are you talking about, she can make that happen, for sure.
So what I'm, what I'm seeing is, the confusion is, every employee has this stepping grade here in front of me. So on my anniversary day, let's just throw this out there, let's say every employee on their anniversary day says, okay, I'm going to get this, and then all of a sudden, they don't get it. And then 50 of our employees goes to labor board and say, here's what we're supposed to get, and the city's not practicing it. Where are we at?
I don't think that's true though, I think that the labor board would say, you know, you have a stepping grade system, that's for point of entry. Refer to your employee handbook, and your employee handbook says that upon a proper evaluation, your supervisor may recommend a raise if there's money available, which is what the council has set forward. There's nothing in the employee handbook that says a step, that you are guaranteed a step up. And so if that is what, the first thing I would say is not every employee has this. And so if that is what, the first thing I would say is not every employee has this. There are probably a handful of them, but not everyone. And if that is the way they believe, then there should be some education by way of the HR department to educate the employee to say, no, that's not the way it works. This is the way it works. Refer back to the employee handbook, not change an entire policy based upon an issue that I don't think we're truly having. I think we have some issues, which I kind of see that what we're trying to solve is maybe we have some jobs within the city that are at a lower grade than they should be and we'd like to move those up. And, but I think that what we have in front of us isn't solving that issue.
I understand your concern there and I would remind that our administration, when our new administrator came into office, this is something that HR obviously thought was an issue and brought to him to try to find the resolution. And I know that you all are interested in how the city is administered and I appreciate your concerns here. Are there further discussion?
I just, you know, I, I kind of what, you know, you kind of hit something there of anything, you know, I realize, and we all really started to discover that with our financial, you know, financially where we had this increase in our pay, you know, our payroll, you know, and we had a, we had a matrix, we had a pay matrix, we incorporated this new, new matrix and then there was, you know, there was this uptrend overall and I don't know what the percentage of, but, you know, some people got a little raise, some people didn't get any and some people got, and so it seemed like that, you know, there was a, you know, there was an uptick there. And so I don't know, you know, I, and I guess really just trying to get my mind wrapped around what this, what did this fix? Does this make Melin's job a little bit easier as far as just not having to explain it? Does it make it easier on, on the, on just the HR department as far as point of entry for somebody? Because there's a, you know, I'm just trying to figure out what we're, what are we, what are we going to, what are we fixing?
Well, while we keep discounting it, we have employees who are confused and continue to years after fact to believe that they are guaranteed a raise because this matrix is in place.
In the other meaning?
And yes, that is a training issue, but Melin's been working since she's been here to retrain on this and it continues to be a problem. And she's brought it forward and said, you know, it would just make life simpler if I didn't have to try to explain that they're not guaranteed this step. And that's what we're asking for.
It just simplifies and clarifies. It's what it does.
I, I would just disagree strongly. I would say it really, it may simplify on paper, but I think it's also now when your departments are hiring, they're not going to really know where to adjust in the scale. I mean, I think it brings a lot of collateral damage that we are not seeing.
And we appreciate your thoughts on that and your concerns there.
And most, I mean, municipalities, I mean, government entities, Cherokee Nation, Northeastern, I mean, everybody operates, I mean, most big organizations operate off of some sort of matrix, right? Is this, I mean, the one, this one that we, the one that we have here, is this just one of theirs?
That is a matrix.
One of theirs that, or, I mean, you know, I'm more of a copy and paste guy who is, you know.
What has been suggested is this matrix in a simpler form that doesn't spell out anything that would say an annual raise to anybody who looks at it.
Grant, we can buy the two items.
That's what I was going to mention if you'd like to read the second one.
That, that would be great.
And I'd also like to clarify that again, just to be clear. The council never approved it to be a raise. It's just a misconception of some employees. So there's, there's no legal binding effect of it in council.
And I don't think there's been any implication that it ever was legally passed if the concern is that whether we like it or not, people do believe this.
Right.
So item number 19, discussion of possible action to accept the new pay step and grade pay matrix for regular full-time employees, grade T111 through T123. So one is to rescind the existing one and the other is to accept the new one.
I would like to make a motion to rescind the step and grade matrix and accept the new step and grade matrix presented as recommended by our administration.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second just because I want to hear, you know, some HR response really, you know.
I mean, there's a lot of things you can do with your staff as far as educating. We do a lot of disclaimers during orientation where employees sign and they come back later and say, well, you promised me I have retirement on day one. Well, no, I didn't. Here's where we told you that you had a six-month waiting period. I don't know. I've not individually looked at any personnel files here at the city and looked at the system that she has in place for, for that. I mean, that's, I don't know that that's necessarily my role as council to do that. But that is something we can definitely evaluate. I know Grant's got a lot of experience in that and with that lawyer degree, all those classes. And, but I mean, we do a lot with, with employee acknowledgements to make sure they're educated and we've documented they're educated. That way if they do come back and try to file a grievance or claim against us, we can show that, that they were knowledgeable and they weren't promised X, Y, Z. So, I mean, that would be, do you agree, Grant?
Yeah, definitely. We could clarify this with education and I think, I think no matter what, it was good that this brought up tonight to just remind the public at large that there isn't a guaranteed bump in, in the salary, et cetera, or pay scale with the non-swarmers here, the non-UNited folk. But yeah, that could definitely happen. And I don't know administrative needs there. Maybe this is not really a legal position, but I will say maybe you want away from Melin to give you some more feedback. I don't know. You've got the administrator, the mayor here, Melin's not here, she's a missing component of this, these agenda items, but.
And if we have just a historical past practice on how she's done that, because I know whoever has been in that role has said, I want to hire whoever at a T112, step three, and we just make that motion as always, but we've never validated that. So we just kind of made the assumption that whoever was in that HR manager chair was doing their due diligence and doing their role and that whoever was overseeing the HR manager was also doing their role by making sure that he or she was doing their task accordingly. So we made a lot of assumptions sitting up here in the board.
Sure. Also, as a practical step, if you go with the new suggestion, you'll have to identify the actual salary, starting salary, you're going to have to pay hourly pay for each employee that you hired, according to, identify these markers or whatever.
You were saying T111, step three?
Right. But quite frankly, sometimes those get confused when they come up here, you know, sometimes as you know, so.
Right.
It might be cleaner that way. Who knows? I don't.
I mean, and we, we're different in the sense that we don't make everybody a T1, T12 or whatever. I mean, we have, you know, registered nurse, licensed practical nurse, medical director, you know, chief financial officer. Each specific job description has their own pay band because each of those is very distinctive in the educational requirement and the experience that, that you have to have for a, a position in, in, in our facility. But yeah, I mean, there's a lot of ways we could have something improved, human resources.
Well, my, my thing is, I just feel like, and I, and I, you know, try to soak this in, but I feel like there are changes that, you know, have happened historically, you know, you guys have been here, you know, you make, you make a change to a policy or you do something that's, you know, you really don't necessarily see the repercussions of it for, you know, especially in the hiring freeze or budget year or, you know, I mean, I just, I just question especially without, you know, I mean, just scenario by, you know, you can go scenario by scenario with each individual job and you say, well, how's this going to affect, you know, three years from now, we want to hire a, you know, park superintendent or whatever. Where, you know, where are they? So I just don't, I can't, I can't play it out in my mind necessarily as to how that transitioned, what we do today and how it affects this policy, how that, you know, how that's going to transpire or take place a year or two or three on a particular individual, you know, and then we look back and say, oh, I remember, you know, now, you know, we can't, you know, we can't even afford to hire this guy or we can't, you know, whatever the case may be. So I, I, I don't, you know.
And all I'm saying is this has been in place for a couple of years and we didn't know that it's caused some problems, so.
I would also say though, this has been in place for much longer than a couple of years. Our, this is a, the new step and grade that replaced the old step and grade. So even then, when we replaced it, I think they had 15 steps then, 16 steps. I'm looking to Ray like he can tell.
Nate probably knows.
I don't remember how many steps were in the old matrix. We've had a matrix for 15 years in the city, probably.
So it's not like just two years ago, this got dragged out to us. So any employee that has been with the city for longer than two years has always been on a second grade system and it's always worked within this.
I agree with Stephen. We talked about how the HR manager determines what step to bring someone in at. That's just been a past practice and we've never actually captured that into a policy that we've adopted. And I think to be cleaner legalistically, we probably do need to take it from being a practice to make it a written policy. So regardless of who sits in that HR manager chair, that we are being consistent because in theory, I mean, in the time that I've sat up here, we've had, what, three different, three different HR people? I think maybe just two. I, never mind. Yeah, because, yeah.
I don't think there was a picture of Jessica.
Yeah. Who was, who was here before Jessica?
Sue Stacy.
Okay. All right. I think she was on before I come aboard, so I take that back. I stand corrected. But in the last 10 years, we've had at least three, right?
Had three in the last 10 years.
So we've had three. So in theory, those three people sitting in that role could have interpreted that differently, which could have created a legal issue for us. So I would recommend that to be proactive to avoid that from happening in the future, we put that into a written document that we adopt and that has zero room for interpretation. So this is our gospel. We go through it and it would be cleaner and neater, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just for new hires. It has nothing to do with promotion, et cetera.
But if we clarify that and adopt that as part of the personal policy, I think that would address the concerns that Stephen has, correct, Stephen?
Yes.
And that way?
Although we're, I mean, there would be no reason to do what you said if we do like the step system, the night, because then we wouldn't have steps to clarify how you get to that step.
Yeah. Touche.
They'd kind of go back to the old way of actually interviewing somebody and see what their work and see what their experience is instead of laying our, our city budget out there as a liability and you've got 100 employees that disagree with us and then we have to go and defend that even though we vaguely say this doesn't count if you're not going to be guaranteed a raise. So that's why I'm motioning that way. I'm not willing to put our, our city finances in that position.
Okay. So are we ready for roll call?
So can we keep the motion? What was our motion? What was it?
Dara wants to rescind the old one and accept the new one.
I'm in the main room.
I would say, just in case this does pass, that T113, the beginning salary is wrong. It should be 28, 9.
989?
89 instead of what is there. And just, I also have one clarification. I think that the motion was to adopt the new step and grade, but by virtue of what we have presented, we're doing away with the step system. So I mean, just to adopt the new grade ranges.
So do you have a motion on the table?
You do, yeah.
Do you want to amend that motion to as we're supposed to do?
Where are you getting the 28, 9, 98?
From the first page.
Okay.
Because the T13 is 20, the current T13 is 28, 989. When they rolled it over to the new, she just said 28, 898.
Okay.
So I'm sure just.
Yeah, but the step, I mean, there's still, step listed out there.
It's not, it's not a million.
It's a range.
There's a grade.
Yeah.
There's no longer steps.
I was only going to say it's a range.
And are you willing to accept those two amendments to your second?
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready for roll call? Counselor Ratliff?
I'm staying.
Counselor Long?
Um, yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
No.
Mayor? Not yet.
It is.
Oh, okay. Then I'll say yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to item number 20, discussion presentation of the new financial system. We've already done that one. So we have the executive session. We have a motion.
Second.
Yeah.
Motion's up.
First is Rattler's second.
Roll call.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
We have a motion to reconvene in a second, 10, 10, here. We have roll call.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number 22, discussion possible action to reconvene. We discovered that. 23, discussion possible action to enter into an MOU with the FOP lodge number 201, specifically amending Article 17 of the current collective bargaining memorandum.
I would like to make a, I would like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with two edits. The second section used to be corrected to say whereas the city and FOP, the P was missing. I would like that to be inserted and at the top of page two, where it says it is mutually agreed upon and understood by and among the partners. Currently it's not the word month in there, but like that's true. And I would like it to be approved with an effective date of January the 26th of 2020. That is the end of my motion.
My second.
A motion and second? Is there a discussion? If not, roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And item number 24, discussion possible action to approve the 2020-2021 contract with IAFF Local 4099.
I would like to make a motion that we table that.
Second.
Have a motion and second? Roll call.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 25, is adjournment?
I'm in.
Thank you. Roll call.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.